Like to call the meeting the order. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Mr. Calavita, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kapadia.
Here.
Dr. Liliston?
Here.
Dr. Lou? Mr. Peters?
Here.
Dr. Redd is not here yet. Mr. Slotman? Ms. Williams Galliano?
Here.
Dr. Wilson? You have a qualm?
Wonderful, thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and The Times on January 4th, 2024. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon FiOS. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. The meeting is being recorded for the purposes of board review, future reference, preparation for the minutes, and viewing on YouTube, Bulldog TV, and the school district website, Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you please sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with recording, record keeping, excuse me. With that said, please join me in the flag salute.
Okay. I would like to request a first and second to approve the minutes of the April 29th meeting. All in favor? Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, minutes are approved. And we have definitely a full house this evening. Unfortunately, we hope to have a little bit bigger space, but those high school spaces are booked for all the year-end activities. So, thank you for joining us this evening and sorry you're a little pressed for space. With that said, I will turn the agenda over to, sorry, to Tana.
Good evening. It is an honor and a privilege to present to the Board of Education for recognition our 2024 Class of Retirees. Their combined total years of service in Hopewell Valley is 452 years. However, much more important than years of service is the incredible work ethic, dedication, and professionalism each of them have exhibited throughout their career, supporting students, staff, parents, and our community. Each of our retirees will receive a certificate and a gift that read the following. "In recognition of your dedicated service and commitment to excellence, we extend our heartfelt appreciation for your hard work and professionalism throughout your tenure. Your contributions have greatly contributed to the success of our district. Congratulations on your retirement. When I call your name, please come forward to receive your gift."
You have to scroll down. Nope, go back. There we go. Anne Adams. John Agarides. Inga Bichalis. Julie Berman. Jennifer Benelli. Bonnie Brown. Ellen Davis. Shannon Deck. Awilda Dunay. Vince Goff. Scott Hahn. Jane Kastner. Deborah Conrad. Kathy Matthews. Kathy Prasis. Deanna Price. Melissa Sheez. Daniel Stires. Wanda Thompson. Dawn Wheeler. And Carmen Wilson. The Administration and Board of Education, thank you for your service to the district. We hope you enjoy the next phase of your life, and while doing so, please remember to reflect on the many lies that you have positively impacted during your time in Hopewell. We wish you all the best. Congratulations to all of our retirees. Please don't be a stranger. If we can, we would like to take a picture of all of our retirees out front very quickly. That's okay with the board? I grabbed one, I was like... You're welcome. I may mock, but I... I don't... Thank you all for joining us and acknowledging our amazing retirees. I am going to pass the torch for this evening's reports to Dr. Therese, as we have an amazing agenda this evening, so keep it free.
We do. We have quite a long agenda, so I want to keep things moving. I do have a quick celebration to shout out. Prue Kapadia, one of our newest board members, just graduated yesterday from Boston University. With a dual major in poli sci economics and a minor in statistics. So, he did nothing for the last four years. He just spent the rest of his time studying basket weaving. No, so congratulations. We're so proud of you. Again, Ms. Hamm, word President Galliano shouted out that we tried to get the bigger room for tonight. It was booked. That's what you get, but we learned. We'll do better next year. You can't wait till the end of the year and try to get that room. So, with that being said, all the end-of-the-year celebrations are well underway. We have a lot of award ceremonies, concerts. Graduation will be the 18th. Kids are forming Lipped Up Videos. All the things are happening right now, so we're very excited to draw this year to a close. Our kids have accomplished quite a bit, and we do have a student here tonight that we're going to recognize shortly, so we're very excited to share that. School is going to happen on Friday. We had too many snow days this year, so it will be official day for anyone who cares to come. We will be here on Friday for a regular day of learning. We had our first official referendum talk last Thursday, which is now, it has been recorded and is on the website that's available for information about the referendum. All the questions that you have are up there answered. If it's not, let us know. We'll make sure we get you an answer right away and add that to the FAQ that's available in addition to the video. We'll have another webinar, not webinar, a live session talk like that in early September, and there will be visits to each one of the schools where the work is proposed for the PTO meetings, where we'll present in person and answer any questions that you have regarding the referendum. We already honored our retirees. I talked about the student, and last but not least, we'll be getting a recap of the Green Week celebration that we had, where we enjoyed a visit from the First Lady, but all the schools had many things going on, so we will get a long report about those great activities in addition to the rest of our board meeting today. So, with that being said, I'll pass it back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Therese. All right, we are going to welcome Ms. Hannah Chu for one of her last few student updates.
Now that we're almost finished with May, we're headed into the last stretch of the school year. On May 1st, we had a Wellness Day, where students participated in four different activities promoting physical wellness, mindfulness, and gratitude. We wrapped up the day with our Spring Pep Rally, which featured spring athletics, a demonstration by the robotics team, the culmination of our March Madness competition, and other fun activities. We hosted the largest unified track meet in the state on May 8th. Students from the Athletic Council made posters to celebrate the unified athletes, and it was a really positive event for everyone. We are also in the middle of the Spring Concert Series. Both the orchestra and the band did an amazing job at their spring concerts last week. We're wrapping up Advanced Placement Tests, and we're moving into NJSLA testing. And finally, over 100 students were recognized at Academic Awards Night, which featured students from HOZA, Model UN, Model Congress, and other groups, as well as students who have won awards at the local, state, and national level in art and writing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chu. And again, welcome to stay, but understand if you need to go. Take care. Have a wonderful evening. Okay. Oh, absolutely. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. I'm sorry to interrupt, but this is Hannah Chu's last meeting as our board representative because she'll be graduating prior to the next meeting. So, I just wanted to thank you on behalf of HVCHS for being an amazing representative for us over the past year. You come with a smile every single month. You come with great information, and I know the board has really enjoyed meeting with you, and I've appreciated your attention and your reports. So, thanks, Hannah.
Oh, my gosh.
Hannah, we thought you had one more night with us. Okay, so we're going to have to come see you. That's right, you have awards night the same night we have the board meeting, so...
Thank you for catching that.
So, we will come see you, because we, yes.
Who's got... Wonderful. All right, good catch. Wonderful. Want to make sure we acknowledge her. I thought we had one more. All right, well, next up, we'd like to invite Ms. Jean Freddie to come up. We're going to acknowledge an amazing student.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to recognize one of our Stony Brook students, Vedika Krishna, who won the Species on the Edge Art and Essay Contest. I mean, you can take a look up there. That's some of her artwork, but this contest empowers 5th grade students to advocate for an endangered or threatened species from New Jersey through a well-researched creative essay and an original art piece. I won't read Vedika's entire piece, but I just want to share the first paragraph to demonstrate her creativity. "I looked at the black path called a road by humans." Ugh, humans, so filthy. "Anyway, this road used to be a swamp, my first home. Many of my friends and family tried to cross the road in hopes of finding food and shelter. It cost them their lives. Close your eyes and imagine you had no home, no food, no family. Car incoming! Back to the leaf pile. You can open your eyes now. Phew, we're safe. Make yourself comfortable. I'm the blue-spotted salamander, as you might have known." Vedika then follows her essay with information about the animal, as well as ways to help save this animal by reducing use of pesticides and not keeping them as pets. So, I just want to take a moment to recognize Vedika. We're so proud of her for her hard work, as well as her language arts teacher, Mrs. Jimenez, for just guiding her through this process. So, congratulations, Vedika. Thank you.
Just a quick note also on your agenda. There was a second-place acknowledgement from Tollgate, Samantha Lou. So, just want to make sure we acknowledge her as well, even though she was not with us this evening. All right. Okay. Moving on to the Green Week recap.
Good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Therese, President Williams Galliano. Thank you again for having me, as well as our Green Week representatives here at this evening's board. We had a very busy week of Green Week. It was the third week in April, and from, I would say, like a macro perspective at the district level, we held a Climate Action Committee overall, just kind of the work that we've been doing, and we had a number of representatives there. And from that, we're actually proud that we've started an ECO PTO, and I'm happy to hear, happy to see that some of our representatives are here this evening. So, we're excited about the work that, you know, that community and that those residents in our community are kind of forming and helping this great cause that we have, and as you can see, it's starting to trickle, which it has been for many years here at Hopewell, where you can see the work that our students have been doing. At the high school level, we had ECO Lunch and Learns. We had a number of Climate Action speakers there, as well as Climate Solutions Fair. At the elementary level, Hope Elementary School was very, I would say, blessed to have our First Lady visit, as well as a number of members from the NJ DOE, where not only we took the First Lady through a tour of the wonderful offerings we have at Hope Elementary School, but we're able to show them just our partnership that we have with Sowland Conservancy, as well as a number of the other different Hopewell Valley Education Foundations, funding of our Infinity Garden, and a number of other different things. At Tollgate Grammar School, they had a Student Green Week Expo, where students showed off and showcased some of their different wonderful things that they were doing and some of the different ideas that they have, but it was just really a nice little celebration of some of the things that we are doing on an everyday basis here at Hopewell Valley Regional School District. So, I know in our next presentation in June, we will be presenting the formal, hopefully the draft of the first Climate Action Committee Plan, that will have a number of those different images, as well as some of the different things moving forward. But we wanted to thank you again for the board's support in that. We look forward to partnering again as we continue our work, so thank you.
Okay, with that, we're going to open up for our first public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. So, our timekeeper will be here to my left on the paddle. Do you want to give any directions?
Yeah, just so everyone knows, at two and a half minutes, when you have 30 seconds left, I'll hold up yellow for you, and then at three minutes, I'll hold up red.
Thank you. Public comments are now open.
Good evening. I'm Allison Yakis from Hopewell Township. I just have a few questions regarding several different topics tonight. I am asking this question regarding my student-to-be junior in high school. I got an email earlier to clarify from Ms. Riley, but I just want to know why option two wellness is only available to seniors. Students in their junior year are really focused on academics for college admissions, and they could really use this extra time for those that are in rigorous athletic programs after school. So, I was just wondering if this option could be available to juniors as well because of that academic rigor. And then a couple of other topics. We have one of the highest costs per student in the state, as I've previously mentioned, and we have mediocre test scores. I think Stony Brook is probably the best out of the schools, but all of the numbers are readily available online. I'm not in finance, but it seems to me that we're doing C-grade work with an A-plus budget, and I just know in other organizations, if you're not holding up your, the level of acceptance, then people get reorganized or, like, there's an action plan involved, and I'm just wondering what our district is doing to help get our test scores up, because the students are in school to learn for academics primarily. That's, or that's the first priority, I should say. That's, or that's the first priority, I should say. So this leads me into my next point, which is I talk to countless families, and not asking, they just, it's just a common topic, I think, that people say they're leaving the district as soon as their kids graduate from high school. And people are counting down the days to sell their properties, because our taxes are so high. And it's the season right now. If you watch, you'll see graduation signs. Yay, we're graduating. Yay, we're moving. For sale right next to it. I see it time and time again. And I just feel like you're taxing us right out of the district. I know not you primarily, it's the township and the county and the state also, but my concern is the referendum. Hopewell Borough recently had an issue with their water supply, increasing unexpected costs for them. Princeton Farm also issues with their sewer system. No money was prepared for repairs or upkeep, so we're paying for it for repairs now. So on top of that, we have inflation, and next comes the referendum. I'm just wondering, you mentioned the reasons for the middle school turf, and how often are the students actually bust offsite to turf fields? I'm just asking, because my kids have never experienced this. How many other middle schools in New Jersey have turf fields? How is the future maintenance being planned for in the budget? And a recent suggestion to me was that the township, maybe should, they should install a turf field at their academic, their township athletic fields, the municipal complex. Maybe they should take care of new turf fields, so we can take that off of our referendum. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do I just introduce myself and start? Okay.
Absolutely. I was not prepared to talk today, so I'm gonna do the best I can with being succinct. My name's Kristin Broderick. I have three young children. My oldest is a kindergartner at Hopewell Elementary. And I am one of the co-founders of the group that Dr. Patel had mentioned, that we are calling ECO PTO. And ECO comes from the Greek word meaning home or habitat. And justice comes from the Latin word meaning fairness. And essentially, what we are working on is supporting and strengthening eco-justice initiatives, ideally within the public school curriculum. And where that came from was many things, but primarily the health and well-being of youth. As we know, the surgeon, or as some of you, or hopefully many of you know, the Surgeon General has put out a major, not only warning, but I forget the word he uses, but a red flag for the, the level of mental health struggles that youth are facing. And the research that we not only believe in, but subscribe to for ECO PTO is that nature connectedness and community health is what's going to improve the situation. And so what we are asking for is your support in not only hearing out different eco-justice initiatives, but also questioning the autopilot decisions that are made day to day. And not specifically, I'm not saying that you all are doing that. I'm just talking about, we all, as humans, make decisions mostly based on autopilot, because they're the easiest. But the easiest choices have gotten us into this predicament. And so, again, we are just asking for you to look at things with a fine lens and have the priorities of nature connection and social justice behind you with the decisions that are made.
Any other comments?
Good evening. My name is Julie Cesari. I have two small children, one of which is a kindergarten at Bear Tavern Elementary. And I was not prepared to do this either, but I figured, seize the day. There have been a couple of things that I have been wondering about as a first-time public school parent. So I've noticed at assemblies and school activities that the music that's being chosen, while I personally enjoy it in my home, it, it doesn't really seem appropriate for elementary school children. And even noticed a couple of curse words slipped in. And just the content is not, not appropriate. So I was just kind of curious how those decisions are made, and if the music choices need to be run past principals or teachers, anything. And also, I am particularly concerned about the testing that is happening in the elementary schools. I participated in the Wellness Day at Bear Tavern Elementary, and I was with the 5th graders who were gearing up to do their testing. I was there teaching them mindfulness meditation, actually. And when their teachers mentioned that they might use it in the upcoming, for the testing, I forget the nickname, they had a nickname for it that was kind of scary. NJ Slay, or something like that. I could just see their faces really drop, and the stress come over, and then just a blankness, like a shutting down. And so I understand that testing is not just put in place by, you know, districts. There's things that are required from the state, and possibly beyond that. So my question is, are we questioning that? Is there anything that the district can do, parents or a whole, can, how can we affect change and make sure that our children are being nurtured, especially in the elementary level, as whole beings? So that when they get to the upper levels, they have the fortitude and the wherewithal and the the self-startedness that they're gonna need, so that they don't burn out. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, seeing none, I will turn things over to Dr. Trese, and we can kind of go down your list, and you can assign appropriate.
I'm gonna start with Ms. Yakis's. There was a lot here, and I know that I won't be able to answer all of it tonight. But quickly, I, I know the taxes in New Jersey are hot. I know that the taxes are very high. We've, I hope that we've done a good job of explaining why. We decided that referendum was a good way for us to plan for the community to go after monies from the state, because that's the only way we can access some of the funding that we can get from the state to help support these repairs that we need to get done, like HVAC and roofs and boilers and all of these things. A lot of these projects are things that we've had plans for, for a while, and we're just getting overwhelmed because of the age of the buildings we're dealing with, the projects we have planned, where we keep chipping away. And we've done millions of dollars of jobs, both internally and outside of us, by bringing contractors in. We are just in a place where we're just getting overwhelmed with these things. And I don't want to get the district in a position where we have a catastrophic closure on one of our schools for something that we haven't dealt with. And all, most of these repairs are that. In terms of the turf field, the turf field will not just be used by the middle school, although that's where it is. It's for all of our student athletes. We've also heard some interest from folks in the community, some rec folks that are also interested in having access. Bob Calavita is working with some of these organizations to see if we can get some support with, with funding and helping with this field as well, in the future, also for repairs and those sorts of things, and lighting and things like that. The township and the other municipalities' participation in the, in our turf field, we are still talking to them about ways that they can support us, specifically the township. Those, we're still having those conversations on how they can help support with any of these projects. And again, these things will not be all bonded at once, because we can't do all the projects at once. So it will be over time. These projects will be rolled out to alleviate the, the impact to the taxpayer. Now, there was a mention about our test scores being mediocre. They're a little bit better than mediocre. We're top in the, in the state. Yes, they ought to be better. That's one of the reasons why we hired teacher leaders, who are now, who will be reporting to the Education Committee, actually, next month. And we actually know where our kids are now. We actually know how we need to move them up, and we've actually seen improvement, since I've put the, the teacher leaders back in place. And we have our SIM facilitators coming back, which is wonderful. So, you know, our per people cost is high. We do have a, a high classification rate here compared to other districts. That's because people come to us because we do such a great job. And that, and that costs money, but we're gonna do what's best for our students. So that, that's, that's part of the reason why we, we spend a little bit more than other districts around us do. Did you want to add anything else?
Yes, I just want to also point, yeah, I'll pass it to Bob. I also want to point out that we have a unique infrastructure here with the number of buildings and the age of our buildings, which is costly. And I think the, the changes in the work that the administration is doing to bring HVAC into a more sustainable and current, contemporary technology will help. But our, there are many layers of things that affect our cost per student other than our academic delivery. It is our buildings. It is our transportation challenges and, and things like that. So, anything you'd like to add?
I think you, you both tackled the questions well. The turf field, again, is, is not on the middle school site. It's actually on the back Timber Lane site where the AFT fields are. We do send students out to the municipal complex and also the Twin Pines complex nearly every day from August, when we start, through the end of November. Not to say unsupervised, but the coaches are there, but there is no way for them to get back once they're dropped off. There's no athletic trainer over there. We also send them over there from March till May for practices and games as well. So we felt strongly that we bring as many of our students back to campus as we can, so that they have access to emergency, our emergency personnel, our trainers, and just being on-site, so that they're not, they're not taken off. It's also gonna help alleviate missed games and practices due to weather. I mean, obviously, the last several weeks, we've dealt with rain almost, you know, every day, every week. We've dealt with a lot of rain, and we've had to cancel many events for our students. So we felt, and, and again, for the reasons we spoke of, the community has been reaching out to me on almost a daily basis for, you know, when is it gonna be done, and how can we access the additional field? So I'm sure there's going to be some revenue that's going to come in to help fund those complexes. So for, for those reasons, I think it was a prudent thing to add to this referendum.
So the last question Ms. Yakis had was about option 2 being offered for juniors. And I know that there was a history that I can't recall right now. Vicky, do you remember that history of why we don't allow juniors to do it right offhand? So that's, that's something that we will, I will, I promise to explore with this Blitz, this Dr. Blitz, this and Principal Riley, to see what the discussion was in the past. I know there was a rationale for it, of why we never offered it for juniors, but I'm definitely open to exploring that again. No problem. I think I'm on. There we go. All of the PTO presidents sit on a committee with me. So if you could please make sure that, if you didn't leave your, your email address, if you could put it up there for me, that'd be great, it's on here. Is there an email address here that I can email you? Okay, so if you could write it down for me before you leave and give that to me, that would be great, because we have a meeting tomorrow at 1:00, if you would like to join us. But we definitely, you know, we take this seriously. We have an ad hoc committee of the board that sits on the Climate Change Committee, that has been putting together a very extensive plan that we should have shared with us next board meeting about the district's plan to try to reduce our carbon footprint in the next five years coming forward. And it's extensive. It goes into not only what we teach and how we educate our students, but facilities planning and things like that that we'll be doing moving forward. So we definitely want you to be part of the District Parent Council and to be part of those conversations moving forward. You're welcome. And then finally, to the parent about the NJ SLA, the New Jersey State Assessment. We would love not to have to give this assessment as many times as we do. It used to be, it was once a year in the spring. Set down, you did your, your little math and science for a week, and then that was it. Now, it's, it's longer. It happens a couple times a year, multiple times a year. It is a state mandate, because it's linked to a federal mandate. Anyone who takes state funding, and the state takes this federal funding, have to be compliant with, with sort of these high-stakes tests. We do complain often about the number of times that our students have to sit for these tests, but they are required, so we continue to complain. Parents continue to complain, but right now, I don't, I don't know that I can change that, but I would love to. I would love not to test our kids as much as we do. But thank you for your comments. Yes, could you send me an email, give me some specifics about that? Because I would need to look in that. There should be no cursing in any of our, in our music. So I would like to check, look into that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. With that, public comment is now closed. Do we have any old business? Seeing none, I need a first and second to approve the consent agenda items.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. Consent agenda items are okay. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Alex, from Finances and Facilities?
So we had a rather long discussion with folks from Hennington Borough, who came over to give us an update on the zoning issue with this property, as well as Tollgate. And kind of the impetus for discussion is they're in a process of working out a revised master plan for the borough, and so they're looking at all kinds of things. And they've noticed that the way the property was owned was out of whack. Essentially, their zone has residential. It, I'm at. So we had about an hour discussion, lots of good information. I'm gonna try and summarize the bottom line. The zoning doesn't really impact us right now in any way, because everything that we do needs to be approved by the Department of Education, and they're the only ones that have any authority over what school districts do with their property, public school districts. That was an interesting little datum that I found out. But it does have some impact on what should happen if we decide to, for example, sell the property. And the boroughs want, big concern is there's a historic value to the facade of the administration building, as well as the facade of the Tollgate. And they want to ensure that no matter what happens in the future, at least those facade and kind of the look of people when they enter, the, the look and feel of the borough as people drive on Main Street is preserved. Now, we did assure them that we have absolutely no plans. Now, we did assure them that we have absolutely no plans to do anything with either property other than to build down the Tollgate, which is in the referendum and fix things. We've actually looked at the idea of selling this property at some point in the past when we had a committee that resulted with a kindergarten, and it just doesn't make any financial sense. Like, the money that we would make, we wouldn't be able to use to relocate the administration. So, we're not, we've assured them that we have absolutely no plans. We're not considering doing anything with either property. But they do want to go ahead and propose a rezoning essentially to an educational zone, which, again, doesn't really impact the administration's ability to ensure or to have some control in ensuring that the facade of the reserve should, should something really unforeseen happen and we're not a problem. So that's kind of the bottom line. I think they, they came in with a pretty large group. They spent the time with us, so they did, they did put in an effort to give us an honest update. I don't have any other points today. Pam, are Bob, did I miss anything?
Okay.
And then, and then we had a quick discussion on the budget cycle, which is about to start, or as Bob says, he's already started it. And we made a request to Bob. So, for those of you who have been on the board for more than a year, you know that we start with kind of departmental updates and then lead into a total budget. We requested that Bob provide kind of a top-level heads-up total picture before we go into the departmental budget so that we have some context for what different areas are doing. And we discuss different possibilities of doing that, perhaps looking at a board retreat during the summer or something like that. So, Dr. Trese and the administration are going to look into that in the next week. That's about it. And we have no actions other than notes on the consent agenda.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Moving, and any questions, by the way? Sorry.
I just had a quick question. With the current Pennington Borough zoning map, would the Pennington School, the administration still be the same?
Yes, we would be the same. Well, same type of zone. They were talking about E2 versus E1 and what that means will not be known. Their intent is to make it similar to the Pennington Borough.
So what that would mean to the board is somewhere in the future, if the board decided they wanted to sell this property and Tollgate, the people that were buying it would have to also be an educational kind of organization, or they would have to go back to the township and propose to the administration. They probably would agree as long as they kept the facade and did the thing. They don't want to change, the purpose is they don't want to change the face of things.
The history.
When you come in, they don't want to see something box here or something that takes away from the charm of the township, is what they're trying to protect.
And I think it's also important to say the master plan is looking out, like, 50 years.
Yeah.
Right. You know, so we're saying there's no intention.
Ten, ten to thirty-five. Ten years. They mentioned adopted, they're looking to adopt it at 2025, and it's ten years, ten to twenty-five to twenty-three, is what they meant.
Okay, my apologies. Ten years. I heard 2050 somewhere along the way, but...
Yeah, they were flying some dates around, but then kind of circled around that they said, yeah, that's what it is.
Understood. So beyond, beyond some of our time here on the board.
Yes. And the bigger issue is it's not just this building, right? We have the transportation house behind here. We have maintenance behind here. We have no place for buses. Should we, you know, sell the property? So I just don't see this as physically feasible. We're not, I don't think that it would be enough money for us to relocate everything we needed to, nor do we have a space to relocate everything we needed to.
Yeah, and we looked at, when I was on that committee, yeah, well before I was on the board, there was a committee of the public that looked at all kinds of possibilities. So that was considered, and it was pretty clear that there's no, there's no financially reasonable alternatives to staying in this building.
Thank you for that. All right, moving on to our education committee.
Hi, everyone. We had a relatively light agenda for the last education committee meeting. The first item was Ms. Colette Dinado discussed a title change for a new job posting called the Child Study Team Intervention as the teacher leader. This role will assume a leadership role and works with colleagues to help them use data to inform and guide instructional decisions and development, conduct the job embedded professional development, and support professional learning communities. We currently have a teacher who is doing an excellent job in teaching reading and writing, and she also does training for all special ed teachers, and she also provides training in research, reading, writing, and intervention for special ed students. Ms. Dinado has already drafted the job posting, and the board approved this change. The second agenda item was Mr. Darren Lewin, the supervisor of social studies and wellness, and Ms. Katie Kame, Hopewell Valley Municipal Alliance, reviewed the drug and alcohol used in the curriculum. And the purpose is really to see if there is any gaps in the curriculum and identify solutions. They worked very closely with council department and student assistance counselors. They provided overview of the programs implemented at various grade levels. For example, what are the topics covered at the high school level? And also, for example, if students were taught how impaired driving was like, simulation was done on the campus property. And Ms. Katie also discussed preventative programs, for example, post-pron program, Not Even Once, working with police, juvenile detectives to share powerful stories, engaging community members, families, and also leverage research-based, high-quality programs. The third agenda item was provided by Mr. Darren Lewin. Again, it's about the civics in our district, the civics education. We all know this is a very important topic. There are three items he shared. The first one is to really look at what New Jersey requires. He referenced the RSE framework, college, career, and civic life, and also looking at what we're doing in our district and trying to identify gaps or anything we could do more. For example, right now, in history, economics, and geography, we have teaching. What about making that, or adding elevations in social studies? He also talked about the model Congress and model UN at high school, which Ms. Drew was just referencing too in her update. And then, he also mentioned a number of other national programs that we could leverage, for example, with the People is a Project in Ways to Education. In purpose, making another required course in social studies on civics, the board's reaction was we are less sure, we don't want to add any another required course despite the importance of it. So if there is a way to highlight the importance of the civics education without adding another required course, which is definitely what that, I wonder if other colleagues have any thoughts on that.
Yeah, on that last point, it's stronger than just as a way to add things. I think most of us felt that the right way to approach civics is to make the property a part of a number of courses that are already being taught across the country as opposed to just having a, a, you're going to do civics for six months or a year and then forget about it. And so that kind of works in both ways. It's a, it seems a better way of addressing it, and it also spares us from trying to squeeze yet another requirement into the curriculum that doesn't have all that much of a flexibility in anything.
I would also just like to add that a major part of our discussion on the education committee was talking about the necessity to add, to add more awareness curriculum regarding drug use, specifically marijuana use as we move towards, as the policy committee moves towards abolishing random drug testing in the coming months. It's important not to just make a pretty substantive policy change and not also addressing the curricular components of that. And so I just, you know, I shared some perspectives, and I would say perspectives from a younger generation about the concerns and curricular gaps when it comes to de-stigmatizing drug use and also, you know, enforcing and, I would say, adding on curriculum to bridge some of those gaps. We do a phenomenal job, both well of alcohol awareness and protecting students that are graduating and going to post-ABRSD life when it comes to binge drinking and other risks that come with alcohol. But we don't do a great job about informing students about healthy and responsible, you know, ways of coping with drug use as well. So I think that's an important curricular gap, and that was a major part of our discussion in the education committee.
Wonderful. Any questions? Okay.
I just... Good. So I think, I mean, the question is really linked to both of the efforts that you spoke about, the drug and substance use curriculum, and then one is related to civics education. So just, what are the next steps there?
So, in regard to the civics education, we talked about, as Dr. Resnick was mentioning, like infusing it in various curriculums. So we talked about a lot about civil discourse and how, so we, Mr. Lewin is going to make that part of his departmental goals about ways to include civil discourse in the social studies classroom. So rather than, look kind of like it naturally infused rather than having it as a separate entity. And then in terms of what Mr. Kapadia said with the marijuana, after that meeting, Ms. Tommy had reached out to us to give us some resources that Darren will be in touch with about utilizing those resources and bringing in speakers or looking at revamping the curriculum.
Thank you for the updates around EdCom. Moving on to personnel, and we do have some roll call votes, so...
I'm afraid to touch this thing. So the personnel committee met prior to this meeting, which we do, rather light agenda. Obviously, we already heard we're going to have some roll call on some appointments, two of which we had a considerable amount of interviews at CNN, which we'll cite about one of those supervisory roles we got to see in that black group, and hopefully we definitely get the best. Regarding the retirements that we just saw, always great to be able to celebrate that, especially with 450-some odd years combined service. That's fantastic. As usual, we also want to just mention, well, that's on the agenda, Wendy Thompson, who started as a bus driver in 2012, was also part of that list, so congratulations to her as well. And then last, we talked about the employee assistant program, contract renewal. That continues to be something that I know administration and me and the board are really proud of, being utilized a lot by employees of the district, and we're going to continue to do that as a service that we bring to staff. So, anything else I missed?
I just wanted to share that our two new supervisors are present this evening, so I did want to take a moment just to recognize them. We have Ms. Stephanie Reed for ELA. And we have Ms. Corey Rudd. She will be our new counselor supervisor.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and welcome. Okay, with that, we need a first and a second to move all the recommendations on the personnel.
First.
Second.
Tie. All right, roll call.
Mr. Kapadia. Dr. Liliston.
Yeah.
Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Slotman. Dr. Wilson.
Yes.
Dr. Genovasi.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to community relations.
I'd like to make an observation. There are two microsocialities.
Maybe that's the static.
They are being, they are being looked, a new system is being looked into by our folks next door. These are 20 years old, so I'm surprised.
Well, I could do that. I feel more important.
Okay, well, community relations. We had essentially two, two elements, two themes to our conversation. One was, of course, the referendum. We were talking about voters about, we talked to voters about the disrepair of schools in need for improvements. It doesn't seem to be enough to sell the referendum sometimes. We were talking about home values. We then added to the notion that maybe we should talk about the home values being good for students, protecting the health of students and improving students' learning and the ability of students to serve Hopewell Valley to, on a wide range of student needs. That would be more saleable, that would be a better sales pitch to our public. We also noticed that the senior citizens seem to have problems with taxes basically because they're on fixed incomes, most of them. And we talked a little bit about tax relief. There's some tax relief programs that are available to them. On the second theme, empowering students, we talked about cell phones and how they are negatively affecting our students as well as the students across the nation. I mean, the research is pretty clear that cell phones aren't a great benefit to students in the classroom, given height. And one thing, we were, Dr. Treese looked at, told us about a program that they were doing, using at Ellington Middle School in Connecticut. And actually, the next night I saw that on NPR, that they have little bags with locks on them, and kids get to put their cell phones in the bag, lock it up, and keep it on their person. In other words, they're not parted from their cellphone, they just can't use it the whole The, it sounded like a good idea. When the conversation on NPR was, or on public television was pretty good, they were pretty positive about it. Our problem is that it's going to cost a little bit of money, so we have to wait for a bit. How, I, now, we need to get cell phones under control, but that's not the whole solution. And it sort of connects with the conversation we had here with curriculum. And, I mean, students need to learn self-control. They need to understand why cell phones are impacting them negatively, and we need to give them those skills. And I'm glad to hear you're talking about it in curriculum because this is something that not only that we have to do here in the, in the schools with the curriculum, we need to also do it in connection with the community because essentially, those skills have to believe from the school into the community. And so we need to start thinking about how, we don't just, can't just put things in the bag and figure they're finished. We have to talk about what kinds of self-control mechanisms can we give kids to understand that the importance of school, learning, but also the negative impact socially and politically and economically that they are going to encounter if they can't... and, and politically and economically that they are going to encounter if they can't have some degree of control with their, with these kinds of media.
Yep. Way, way better than leaning over to the mic, right? Well, that was a great segue to move over to SCL.
SCL.
Before we, before we move, so. A, there's going to be a little counter play back or, or anti-play back to what Mike said, but a small additional update from me. So we talked previously with community relations about trying to get a kind of a media board member, conversations going or at least let the board members reach out to community organizations. We received guidance from Paul, who's our attorney, and what we are and are not allowed to say, right? So this is not a conversation about the referendum. But once I had the guidance, I took initiative, I reached out to the Tollgate PTO, I had a quick meeting with the Tollgate PTO board, asking them, well, explaining them what this is about, asking them if they're interested in organizing this. They did feel that the calendar for the rest of this school year was a little bit too packed, but we did agree that in early September, they were going to organize something for the whole Tollgate Darren community and the extended Tollgate community. And, and so just letting all of you know, and we'll see how that goes.
I just had a, a quick question, Mike, Dr. Wilson, and maybe this is actually for Dr. Trese, I'm not sure. So I think you mentioned that the school climate survey starts in, in that committee, right? In the community relations committee?
Yes.
And so where is that in terms of its progress of making its way through the committees or the review process?
So we, we basically have been doing the same, we looked at the survey last year, we didn't make changes to it at all, really. I would suggest that we do at the next meeting, do it right away so that we can send it out sooner than later, is what I would like. So if you have any comments about, I'll, you know what, I should just share it with the whole board. And then if you all have some comments and things like that, before we go into our committee meeting, then we can just tweak it and then send it out as soon as possible because I would like to do it sooner than we've been doing it.
Yeah, that's really helpful because I was thinking, you know, as you all give your updates and different committees are working on different priorities, we ought to be thinking about how do we leverage that survey to get information from the community on some of these issues we care about. You brought up two of them right now, right? So, so I think the sooner we can get that moving, the better so that we can make sure that we really utilize it to its full potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. So SCL also had its meeting and discussed some of the similar sort of topics. We actually had a joyful slide deck of the SCL day. No, truly it was watching our children during these SCL days and being able to see them in each of the different schools' activities, that some of them were tied to the Character Strong curriculum, to our SCL goals, they were outdoors doing activities, they were doing mindfulness, they were doing yoga, they were doing outdoor hikes, you know, working in the school gardens. There were so many activities that they were doing and it, it really just was a joy to go through the slide deck of all the different activities at the different schools. So I want to thank the many parents and community members that come out on SCL day because it takes a lot to put those days together. So thank you very much for that. The other agenda items that we talked about in the meeting, oop, away, was we are also exploring, we had several parents come to us wanting to explore outdoor learning and particularly on a farm, which ties into mental health and well-being. So we are exploring that with one of our parents and community members. We're also exploring some professional development for staff on meditation, tapping, and trauma-informed awareness that will be facilitated by a professional doctor, I'm going to mess up the name probably, Andous Faris. And then we met our new supervisor of counseling. At our meeting, you were doing your final interviews, so we're happy to see that hire go through. And we're looking forward to a presentation on SCL coming in the coming months. My committee, did I miss anything important there? Thank you. And now we are moving on to policy and with Dr. Liliston.
Okay. So the policy committee met on Monday, May 13. We had some special guests join us, Heidi Kame and Susan Polinsky from the district's digital wellness committee. So they shared a really nice presentation on cellphone use among adolescents, some common themes here, and in particular, what we're learning from the science about the addictive nature of cell phones and its impact on our students. So they also shared what we're learning from schools that have implemented full cellphone bans. I think you mentioned one of them, Dr. Wilson, but they shared that these schools have really reported positive impacts on their students, including more socializing with peers, less stress, and decreases in hits, harassment, intimidation, and bullying incidents. So we thank them for the very informative presentation and look forward to continuing the discussion. So now moving on to the policies on your agenda, if you want to pull them up and follow them along, we have four sets of policies and regulations up for first reading, one policy up for first reading abolishment, and five policies up for second reading. So can I please have a motion and a second to move policy 1523, comprehensive equity plan, policy and regulation 5111, eligibility of resident, non-resident students, policy and regulation 5166, uh, 5116, education of homeless, homeless children and youths, and policy 550, disaffected students for first reading. Excuse me, policy and regulation, disaffected students.
Second.
Okay, great. All right. So the first policy that you see here is 1523, which is the comprehensive equity plan policy. This is a mandatory policy that requires the district to develop a comprehensive equity plan, we also call it our CEP, that ensures equitable access to educational opportunities for students and staff. We're required to develop a CEP plan every three years, and our next required report out to the state is this June 2024. So this policy was last revised by the Board of Education in February 2017. So as you go through the revisions that you see to the policy, add additional requirements to the CEP that are outlined in the state's CEP requirements. So for example, you can see in bold, the policy states that we need to conduct a needs assessment to identify potential discriminatory practices or other barriers to achieving equity in educational activities and programs. And then it also outlines key areas that our plan needs to address. So these include professional development, equity in classroom practices, and measurable goals and objectives. There's also some additional small edits that align the language in the policy with the relevant state administrative code. Any of my policy colleagues have anything to add? Question, Dr. Wilson? How would that, what, how would you put that? No, I think that's a good point. And you know, one of the things that we asked Dr. Trese about during the meeting and she helpfully explained to us was what do these needs assessments look like in our district? And I think my understanding is that the needs assessment is being done in lots of different places and we're sort of bringing that information together to tell a cohesive story about what's happening in the school and what are our barriers when it comes to, when it comes to equity? And so that's, so yeah, so I'm thinking based on what she shared, there may be a place out of the ones that you had shared with us where we are looking at some of those factors.
With, with it comes to the, the plan, looking for some very, that's why I sort of spread out, we do our student reports, we do our student, we report out students being classified, being identified, all of those things, when these assessments, the staff asks about PBC, we ask about our students, all of those things, sorry.
All right.
All of those things are part of, of the assessment. Right now, the state is in the process of changing how we report this out, and we still don't have access to what the rubric is, what the metrics will be, and it's due in June. So I, I predict, predict that they're going to move the, the due date to July, but this often happens. And then we'll see what the expectations are because it's kind of hard for me to, to do, to do too much in defining it here when we don't know what the expectation's going to be. But we certainly can add language here to cover that, to start thinking about how do we include the intrinsic value of, of what students bring and all of the other cultural pieces they might bring to the table. We, I think, I know we can put the language in here, we just have to think about what that sounds like. That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comment. Anybody else had any comments or questions? Okay. So moving on, we have two sets of policies and regulations regarding admission of students into district schools. So the first one is policy and regulation 5111, eligibility of resident and non-resident students. So this policy and regulation lays out the eligibility requirements for enrollment of students in our district. This policy was last revised in October 2021 and the regulation in January 2011. So the background here is that a new state law was signed in 2023 that revised the previous law governing school admission for non-resident students. And what it did was it permitted a Board of Education to approve admission of students into the school district who do not reside in the school district with payment of tuition as prescribed by the board. It also says that the board needs to establish a uniform tuition, tuition amount, excuse me, for any non-resident students admitted to the schools in the district. So what you see here is that the policy and regulation have been revised to reflect the revisions to the state laws I described. You can also see that it's been shortened quite a bit by referencing back to the relevant state statute and administrative code sections and to the regulation guide 5111. So last, I do want to call your attention to a choice that we have. So if you move to page five of policy 5111, and then you see sort of the same language on page 10 of the regulation, the board has given the option here as to whether we want to allow F1 and J1 visa students to attend, attend school in our district. For those who aren't familiar, these are special visas for foreign students who are enrolled in full-time academic programs in the U.S. So we're given two options, which is essentially no, or that we are allowed to. And the policy committee is recommending option two under both, which would allow us, but does not require us, to admit these students with payment of tuition and a host family that resides in our district. And we had a good discussion around this, and I think the committee's thought was that allowing admission of foreign exchange students when appropriate really does enrich both their educational experience and that of the students in our district who can learn from them. Any comments, questions, or anything I missed from my policy committee colleagues?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So on the tuition amount, where do we establish what the tuition is? You just said up the, up to, I think the language you used, the board, the, the language was the board gets that what the tuition is?
Yes.
I was actually surprised to hear that because I don't remember us ever adopting a tuition.
We do it every June.
We do?
Every June.
Oh, well, I'm, I'm going to wake up in the June. So that's not part of the policy? That's a separate line item that we, oh, well.
The, the policy says that we set tuition, but it's not in the policy and regulation itself.
Okay. My second question is on the eligibility. Did, did the committee talk at all about adding a periodic recheck of eligibility? I know we don't do it. We recently had an incident where somebody who did not live in the district anymore for an, an open amount of time was continuing to attend the school, so I was wondering if the committee discussed adding that to the policy.
We do track residency of students and we find out when they're, they're not living here, so.
But we don't require a regular periodic proof of residence?
We, we, I, I don't know how to answer that really well. Yes. Instead of policy, do we, do we have like, we're going to check everybody and make sure they still live here and they all have to bring in their proof of living here? No, we don't do that blankly across the district, but we have been able to identify students that don't live here.
Okay.
There's, there's a mechanism that happens where people let us know and, and things come back or we can't get in touch with folks. They registrar and we work with the, one of our CSOs who actually track and figure out if they're living here or not. And then they get a letter from me saying, we've determined that you don't live here, either withdraw your child in a couple of weeks or here is the tuition rate for the remainder of the year. And then at that, that point, if they don't withdraw their child, then the board can decide to withdraw the child at the end of the year.
Shouldn't that letter say something like, we have reason to believe you no longer live?
That, yes, it says all of that.
And one of the options should be provide proof of.
That's how it's written. Provide proof, you have a couple of weeks, otherwise you go with the tuition.
Okay.
Yep.
And then my last question is the visas. Is, is that exclusively, primarily for foreign exchange students?
The language in here, yes.
The J1 and F1, I believe, are, they're, they're student visas.
Right, they're student visas, student visas, you know, kids from college, want student visas here would be a little bit weird, some, some high school.
No, that we're, we're. Age.
So yeah, just another question on the binary. Yeah, I know. I'm surprised that this is such a binary choice. Either we're saying we're not going to admit them or we may. Do we have any examples of a district who has made the decision to say they're not going to admit F1 or J1?
I would have to research that. I don't have any up top my head.
I would be interested in knowing, again, I'm just, I'm surprised this policy is, is this way, knowing, I guess, Trenton and where we live, that that would be a, that binary choice. So I guess I would ask if, if there is a district that did make a decision to go about not saying F1 and J1, well, why? That to me seems like a very hard choice to make, and I may not be following this, but I feel like some sort of follow.
If I'm understanding the context of your question, it's, it makes no sense that there is a yes or no.
Yes. That's, that yes, the answer to your question is yes.
Yes.
Well, it is an additional liability and it is additional workforce for the district to. Well, it is an additional liability and it is additional workforce school district, bringing in exchange students. You have to be very careful of the companies that you're using, the host family, if they're not treating the student well or there's a problem there, then we would have to intervene with the student that's out of country. There are reasons why I can see a school district not wanting to be bothered with it. We've had some challenges in the past with some organizations ourselves. So it is work for a district to do this. I think the value that comes out of it well outweighs the work and the incidents that you have that are bad and there are some that happen. Hopefully are far enough in between that I would not recommend that we.
So to follow up on that, because Mark gave me time to think. Through my original question was, what if, and you may not know an answer to this, right? But what if you have a graduate student, say, who's here on a student visa, with a, they live in the district and they have a elementary school child? Assuming that child here is also, I guess, on the same kind of visa. Are we? How are we treating that? Right? So the parent is here on a student visa, they live in the district. I'm assuming we're gonna admit the child into the district. But to me, the policy seems to be kind of unclear. Not even clear to me what the visa status of that child is.
These visas are issued, what we're talking about are students that are coming here on exchange, like a high school student, a middle school student. Usually it doesn't happen much younger than middle school. It's rare that it's middle school. It's usually high school. These are students that are coming over for a short period of time to get the experience of being in an American school. We have students that used to go to France and exchange. We haven't had any go on exchange since COVID, but it's just basically for them to get experience of living in another country. So it wouldn't be, we're not talking about adults or somebody who have, would have children.
So what about a child of somebody who's here on the visa, on the more permanent visa? How is that treated?
If they lived here, they were living here legally.
Yeah.
Yes, they could place their kid in district here.
Okay.
And we have folks that are in that status.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sorry, just another phone.
No, I, I, is this thing on? I think it is. I don't want to belabor the point, but I'll just say, speaking on a very personal level, and I mentioned this during the policy committee, I was an exchange student in high school and we had exchange students to my high school. And the sort of cultural exchange and just the knowledge exchange and everything else was just, I mean, very clear, you know, and strong memories on both sides. And my dad was an exchange student in Argentina. So like, I strongly believe this is, you know, the right policy and, you know, what we're recommending is the right thing to do because I just, you know, I think it's an important thing. It's an important opportunity for a lot of people going both directions, which is probably not what, hopefully I gave Mark enough time.
Get clarity on my statement, yeah.
To, to, to figure out what he was gonna say.
Oh, yeah. So I think, I think what I'm hoping to get, and Dr. Teresa was helpful for me to respond to that. Now I have a follow-up question, so. And we can take this to, I can do follow-up off, out of public if needed for a follow-up discussion, but when, if we have a visa student, is there a process by now that administration makes the decision to admit or not? Okay, so that already exists. Okay.
Lois Bob, one who's in charge of our world language program, because usually they're coming through, you know, her, she's the one that's in charge of that. She works with the company to bring in students or not bring in students. And she's had to deal with some of the problems we've had in the past. So she has a history of who, you know, we kind of don't work with anymore. Quite frankly, we haven't had any students with us since COVID. So we're working back towards that. But again, right before that, we had some bad experiences. So we really, that's why it says may. We may take them, but it's not always going to be the case.
And it's, the taking of, there's no board decision on the taking of a student. That's completely the administration.
And really, we just want the child to be safe. And we've had bad experiences because the child was not in a situation that was good for the child. And then you have to go about trying to make sure that child is taken care of or gets back home or whatever needs to happen at that point.
Yeah, I, I will add that I know personally of exchange students that we had through COVID that had a very positive experience with most families. And my question was actually not about that. The whole visa discussion, I was kind of. Rumi and I was concerned about that there was an option to not accept the child that resides in the district.
No, this is non-resident students. So this is somebody that's just coming in for a brief amount of time. And this policy and regulation also speaks to, there are folks that buy houses here and they're not ready to move in yet. The house, maybe they're getting something built or it's being renovated or the agreement is they're moving in on a certain date that's after when the child needs to start school. So in those cases, the parents cut us a check for tuition and they have so many days that they can be here for sort of grace period while they're moving in. And they have to have records and proof that they are moving in. And then they have to move in by that date or then we start charging them tuition. Usually, and we've had this happen multiple times and no one has had to have their check cashed. So everybody, you know, follows the rules, but we go through a rigorous process to make sure they really are moving in.
Great comments. Anything else? Okay. All right. So the next policy that we have up also is around admission of students to our schools. And so this is policy and regulation five, one, one, six, which is education of homeless children and youth. So this pertains to the enrollment of homeless children or unhoused children in the district schools. And it provides the definition of a homeless child or youth and guidance for how to determine which school district the child should be enrolled in if the district that they currently reside in is different from the school district in which the parent or primary caregiver of the homeless child or youth resided in prior to them becoming homeless. So they call that the school district of residents, which is a little confusing, so I wanted to point that out. So the policy and regulation also identify our director of people services, Ms. Donardo, as our school district liaison, who's in charge of facilitating communication and cooperation between these two school districts should that case arise. This policy was last revised by the board in October twenty twenty one and the regulation in June twenty seventeen. So I think the most substantive revision here is on pages two and three of the policy. So the updated language in bold here addresses the specific circumstance in which a child becomes homeless due to terrorism or a natural disaster. And they indicate per the state law that if a child becomes homeless and needs to move out of their school district for these reasons, they can still enroll in the school district where they last resided for up to two school years tuition free. You also see some other small changes to both the policy and regulation, which include mostly the revision of the term homeless child to homeless child and youth. So I'll stop there and see if there's any questions about that or comments. Okay. So moving on to our last policy and regulation here, five, 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 zero, disaffected students. So the board of education is required to review this per the statement of assurances in the state's comprehensive equity plan or CEP. So this concerns disaffected students, which is a term meant to describe students whose instructional needs are not being met by the regular program and who are performing well below their social or their academic capacity. So the policy and regulation here provide guidance for identifying and supporting these students. For example, through instructional alternatives, referrals to the guidance counselor or to the child study team. And both of these were last revised in April two thousand nine. So we just have a couple minor revisions that you'll see here. So we updated the policy to include more gender neutral language. And then we edited the regulation to cover pre-K to high school students as opposed to just kindergarten through high school. Does anybody have any comments, questions? We have to. Yes, yes. We have to review it as part of our statement of assurances that we certify as part of our CEP.
You're gonna look at me like I'm dumb, but I do, it's an excellent question. I'm confused as to the difference between disaffected children and children with disabilities. This is one. Right. Because these are kids, and I've never, this is the first time I've seen this term.
The language. So disaffected basically means that I don't have a learning disability or anything that's a barrier to my learning physically, right? It's just that I just have decided I'm not gonna do it for whatever reason. I've just kind of given up. This is that student that kind of.
But don't we include kids with emotional and behavioral issues?
They may not have an emotional behavior issue. It might just be, I'm just not doing anything, kind of. That's, you know, just kind of has given up. Can you, yes. You want to add something, Paula?
This typically starts with our general education population. So we may have a student that's fine, you know, is a general education student. And let's say in fourth grade, staff begin to notice a change, a shift in either them not showing up to school on time or school avoidance may seem down. Like there's signs that there's something that's altering how they performed previous. And then if you look at, if you look at this, you'll see that one of the guidelines is a referral to child study team. So then it's our due diligence is to, to see what's going on, to see what kind of interventions need to happen on the general ed level. But then if it's something else, then we need to look at it from that special education lens.
But it might not come out being that they need an IEP because if you, they have to have something that you could diagnose or identify as being the root. Besides, you know, maybe I just.
So I'm not crazy in thinking that there's a new one there and it's not.
But one of the steps is, it could be possibly the child study team.
Good question. Okay. So Bob, that's the last, those are the last policies up for first read. There's one up for first read abolishment. Should I include that now? First read abolishment? As part of this? Okay. And so scanning down in your agenda just a little bit. We're also proposing to abolish at the next meeting, but this is for first read abolishment now, policy five, seven, five, five, equity in educational programs and services. Really here, the provisions in this policy are just covered by other policies making it redundant. So as Dr. Wilson said, a lot of these policies kind of look similar. And so that's the reason for getting rid of this policy. So is it all in favor, say aye? All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye. And the opposed are abstaining. Say none?
Say none. Okay. So for second read, I'm not gonna go through these in detail. We did that at the last meeting, but we have five policies up for second reading. So these include five, seven, five, two marital status and pregnancy, five, six, zero, zero student discipline code of conduct, policy two, four, one, one guidance counseling, two, four, one, six programs for pregnant pupils, and policy five, eight, four, two equal access of student organizations. So can I have a motion in a second to move these policies to second read?
Second.
Okay. So we didn't receive any additional comments or edits on these policies during or after the last full board meeting. But you've had a few weeks to mull them over. So are there any comments, questions from the board? Okay. This is the roll call vote, right?
Dr. Lou. Mr. Peters.
Yes.
Dr. Resnick.
Yep.
Mr. Slotman. Dr. Wilson. Dr. Genovasi.
Yes.
Mr. Capadia. Dr. Lillister.
Yes.
Ms. Williams-Galliano.
Yes.
Motion care.
Thank you. All right. Okay. So we're going to, I need a person and second to approve the May and June calendar. I need you to adopt the May and June calendars.
On the schedule right now, we have S E L on June thirteenth. Is that still good? June thirteenth at ten AM? S E L.
So I could, we could do it at eleven, we could do it at eight, we could do it at seven thirty, we could do it later in the day. I just can't do it between nine and eleven. Does, does seven o'clock sound okay?
Okay. Personnel obviously have set for five forty-five on the seventeenth? Thirteen, June seventeenth? Okay, finance facilities, I was gonna do the tenth at five, June tenth, five o'clock. Certainly not least policy.
Are Fridays okay for you all? I think we decided those were pretty clear for people. Yeah. Okay. Does Friday, June fourteenth work?
Remember, it's right before the meeting.
Oh.
The Friday, probably looking at the seventh if you want to.
Maybe we should do the seventh then, just in case there's some legal questions that come. Oh, you can't do it, girl? Okay. We could do it and just hope that no questions come up. Okay.
Okay.
Does ten, ten thirty work for people? Ten thirty work for folks? All right, so June fourteenth at ten thirty.
You got it.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Calendars are approved. With that.
So annually, at the May meeting, we'll also re-enforce it at the June meeting. But this is a call, all call for school board candidates for the November fifth, two thousand twenty-four election. There are four seats that will be open for the board. One three-year term in Pennington Borough, one two-year term in Hopewell Township, and two three-year terms in Hopewell Township. I'll say it again. One three-year term in Pennington Borough, one two-year term in Hopewell Township, and two full three-year terms in Hopewell Township. There's, attached to the agenda is a candidate kit that links to the New Jersey School Board Association. For anybody who wants more information about becoming a school board member, candidate packets can be picked up either at the Mercer County Office of the Clerk or in my office upon request. However, petitions may only be returned to the Mercer County Clerk's office in Trenton. They must be received by July twenty ninth, twenty twenty. They must be received by July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four at four PM. Okay. Um, again, so take a look at that. Uh, we do need candidates to run for school board for the next term.
Okay. Yeah. So, uh, we're going to move on to our second public comment. And as the first, members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. With that said, the same, uh, time procedure will apply. Um, public comments are now open.
Good evening, Kate Hamm. I had heard some comments earlier and I was just looking for some more clarification. In answering questions about the referendum, there was a comment about, um, either videos or tours being posted of all the buildings. And I know some of the discussion that's out in the public is community members wanting to visually see for themselves and not actually videos or pictures. Videos and pictures are wonderful and social media and Instagram and all those things are great for those who utilize it. But there is a population of the community that doesn't utilize that and is concerned about where their tax dollars are going and wants to see for themselves the condition of the building. So I didn't know if there was any thought or opportunity to open the buildings for, you know, a two or three hour block monitored by either a building administrator, CSO, something along those lines. And allow community members to come in and view the six schools and two buildings, if there's any work happening here and at the transportation building, to physically see. You know, a lot of times we buy things online and don't really know what it feels like or looks like until we get it. And it's completely not what we expect it to be. So I didn't know if there was any thought about allowing the public to come into on a designated day and time. Obviously, when there aren't students in, so maybe sometime over the summer, um, to be able to physically see and view what it is that the, uh, referendum presentation references. That's it.
Any other comments? Okay. Seeing none? Oh, oh, I'm so sorry.
Um, we, uh, we, Julie and I had thought.
Re-introduce yourself.
Oh, sorry. Kristen Broderick, um, student at, uh, I have a student at Hopewell Elementary. Uh, the strategic planning outcomes, uh, I, I thought was on the agenda for today. Okay, that's it.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none?
So I'll ask, um, thank, thank you, Ms. Hamm, for your suggestion. The tours were actually something we're exploring to try to figure out how to, to do. Um, we do need to do it with, um, without students in the building and we can't get on the roof, I don't think. But, um, but we could definitely can, we were thinking that that needs to be part of the process is allowing folks to see some of the things that we're talking about. Um, in the meantime, we have put a lot of videos online, um, but it is nice if you can actually get in the building and, and see. So thank you for that, that, um, that advice. And Ms. Broderick, we were supposed to do that tonight, but the, um, Mary Ann, who is facilitating this for us, needed a little extra time to get the reports together. So she's actually making hard copy reports for everyone here. Um, so she will be presenting in June. She asked for a little bit more time. I should have started with that, so thank you for reminding me.
Unfortunately, as Ms. Hamm said, I mean, a drone image of a roof that's failing is, you're not gonna see much. The, the failure is inside and underneath, yeah, so.
You don't want people on a roof especially when it's failing.
A lot of the, the unfortunate thing is a lot of the projects we're seeing and doing are, you know, HVAC repairs. It's the internal guts that, that need to be replaced. They're not necessarily failing, but we're trying to upgrade them. Um, and you're not gonna see that.
That's, that's true, but you can also understand the expand of roof that is required. And, you know, sometimes the image on the map is, or that we put up is not always clear, you know, when you think of the expand of the high school. And, you know, when you're talking seventy-five percent of it needs to be redone. So anyway, great, great point.
And in the case of HVAC project, there was at least one.
Mike?
Oh, it's on. There was at least one instance, I believe more than one, when there is water condensate from HVAC dripping on exposed electrical. Um, or semi-exposed electrical things. So, um, and I don't know if it's in an areas where it's safe to take people, cause some of it is in the basement, right? But I think there are, some of this stuff is in a condition where, yes, it hasn't failed yet, but we need to replace it.
Sure.
We're not just upgrading it for additional reasons.
Good point. All right. Where we can be live, no, no, no rooftops and no pipe. All right. Um, thank you all for, uh, being with us this evening. We are going to, um, I'm gonna request from my peers, a first and a second for, uh, moving into executive session at this time. And I will say that we will be, um, discussing hip and two personnel matters. Action may be taken at this time. Um, and so with that, first and.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, we are now cleared for executive session. Thank you all again for being with us this evening.